Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
We're ready to start.
Pledge of Allegiance, two flags.
United States.
God bless America.
Okay, please be seated. Jean Roll Call.
Benelli. Present.
Here.
Aimo.
Here.
Anagastakis.
Present.
Vey.
Here.
Chini.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Einz.
Here, here.
Kulusek.
Here.
Luhan.
Present.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Bruskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Theera.
Absent.
I'm here.
Stenganga.
I'm here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Tertel.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Vero.
Here.
Russia.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Okay, public participation will be postponed to a future legislative session, but the public is invited to send their written comments via email to jramppen@orangecountygov.com. That's J.R.A.M.P.P.E.N@orangecountygov.com. Jean, you want to read the notice of special meaning?
George, for the members of the Orange County Legislature, notice is hereby given pursuant to Article 2, Section C4 of the Legislative Manual that a special meeting of the Orange County Legislature will be held on Thursday, November 12, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. via teleconference, and the public may view via live streaming, PC County website, www.org county gov.com/legislature/legislativecalendar for the link, to consider the adoption of the following to it. Resolution revising the proposed 2021 executive budget for Orange County and 2021 capital plan. Legislature may also consider and take action with respect to any other matters that may come before this meeting.
Okay. All right, you want to read resolution number one?
Legislator Benton, resolution revising the proposed 2021 executive budget for Orange County pursuant to Section 358, I'm sorry, yeah, 358 of county law and Section 4.07A of the Orange County Charter.
Okay.
Second on that.
Second, thank you, John Vero. Okay, discussion on the resolution, the budget changes or proposed changes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jim Kulusek.
Go ahead, Jim, and I see Minority Leader Paduk has his hand up too, so go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I have, I have one revision or a request for the revise, and it's not adding any money to the budget at all, it's just redistributing a couple of things within one department. And it's for the Tourism Department for the Film Office Specialist. Now, I talked with the Director of Tourism and I spoke with Budget, and they came up with a couple of ways where we can just redistribute some things in that, in their budget and put the Film Specialist, Office Specialist on full-time and not cost anybody anything by just redistributing the funds within that department. You want line numbers and figures, or you want, I think Deb is going to be able to speak in this, I can give you the numbers and line numbers and figures right now.
Whatever, whatever's your pleasure, if you want to do it or have Deb do it, it doesn't matter.
Okay. All right, the line number for Film Office Specialist is 562-930, and the monies that we would need to cover the full-time position as opposed to part-time, there would be, 20,000 would come from 571-820 within that same department, $8,065 would come from 573-820, and $16,805 would come from 560-320. That would be a total of $44,770 just being redistributed through that in its own department, and we would be able to go from half-time to full-time with the Film Office Specialist, which in my opinion and many others, brings a considerable amount of income into the county when they do go out and they find a site for a film, a producer that wants to do something here in Orange County. So, Deb, if you're there, if you want to speak on this and maybe back up those numbers for me?
Yep, that, those are the correct numbers, the total would be about $44,770, and I say about just because we're still not quite sure on the health insurance, so it might be a little less in the end, but that is the amount that we would take and we could redistribute those amounts. And I believe that the Director of Tourism actually offered up the reduction in the consultant line and the special materials line.
I'd like to entertain that and make that a motion if I could, if somebody were to...
Yeah, Mike Paduk seconded it. Okay, discussion on the motion in the second? Yeah. Mike, you had your hand up, Mike Paduk had your hand up?
Yeah, I'll talk on that right now though, Steve, but mine was for a different reason. But in regard to that, you know, the Film Council works with the Hudson Valley, yeah, they're affiliated, but she would be focused more on the Orange County, getting more Orange County sites to bring in more revenue for Orange County, so I'm 100% behind that. I talked with Debbie about where the money could come from as well, and she just confirmed with you what Mr. Kulusek said, so I'm in full support, 100% with not raising taxes, we can do a better job and possibly bring in additional revenue for Orange County.
Okay, I see Paul and then Peter.
Chairman.
We have Luhan as well.
Okay, we'll get Luhan after Tui.
All right, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I know, we did discuss this E and E, and I know Amanda made a presentation at that committee meeting explaining why she wanted to make that change, I did meet with her, part of that, and there is a lot of good rationale for doing this, it does bring in a lot of revenue to the county, especially, you know, when filming stopped in New York City, they were able to come up here and do a lot of work, so I know this is happening all over the Hudson Valley, so I think if, you know, we can make this change without adding anything to the budget, I think it's a good thing to do. I know, when we discussed it, one of the rationales for not doing it is because, you know, the county executive is going to have the final say in, you know, whether or not they make that position change, which he may or may not do, but I think we should, you know, from our end, consider it. Thank you.
Peter?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I just had a question, you were saying that it's going to be redistributed from within the department, and one of the lines were consultant lines is where it's going to come from, where was the other line that it was coming from, or what was, you read the line, but I don't have the book handy right now, I just wondered what that was for?
Okay, I can speak on that or Deb can speak on that. Let me start anyway. One is coming from the consulting line of $20,000, one is coming from the specialty materials line, and the other one is the balance of the austerity, the 20% of the austerity, and that should be all of the three items there right there, so it's all within the budget of the tourism. And Tourism Director seems to think that she can live with this, actually, she's very big on it, absolutely. As you know, last year, I was very, one of the advocates for leaving the Film Office with the Orange County Arts Council because it would have been less expensive for us to do that at the time, but, and she would have been working full-time over there, but now that they have incorporated into tourism and we have a position here, we need to take that full-time position that we removed or was financing at the Arts Council and put it under our domain, we need to finance a full-time position.
Okay, just one other follow-up with the specialty items, how much was that?
Specialty materials, it was $8,065.
Okay, and what is, what are specialty materials?
Well, let me go to the book.
That's probably more...
Are you there, Deb?
Yeah, I'm here. It could be items that they maybe give out at trade shows, those types of things. Yeah, it would be that type of a material.
That type, okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, everyone.
Okay.
And there's still, and there's $25,000 in there, budgeted now, so we're only going to take $8,000 out of that, so there's still going to be a good sum in there for those items.
Thank you, legislators.
Thank you, Peter, were you good?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, okay. Kevin Darian, Luhan?
And Anagastakis also with a question?
Okay, you can go after Kevin Darian.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo the comments made by legislator Paduk and legislator Kulusek. You know, I also had the chance of speaking with Amanda Dana, and, you know, honestly, the work that they've been doing across, you know, this pandemic has really been remarkable. While we've been seeing a lot of their economy slowing down, the upside, the positive thing that we've seen is that, is that because of films moving away from New York City, once again, we're seeing the Hudson Valley as a major location for filming. They're doing amazing, amazing work, and just, you know, you know, this year alone, we've seen so many different movies on Netflix and Amazon that have come out that have been filmed right here in the Hudson Valley, right here in Orange County. It's really wonderful to see our hometowns, you know, showcased on the big screen and, you know, and just on, you know, our small screens as well, obviously. I also just want to emphasize the fact that Nora, you know, she's, she's been working really, really hard, and, you know, the last thing that we want to do is lose a talented individual like her who's doing the work, knows the job, you know, get picked up by some other, you know, regional organization, you know, that's the last thing we would ever want, and especially someone who has that knowledge. And so I think that, you know, with everything that's going on with this pandemic, seeing that someone is doing the work and has been consistent with us, I think it's definitely, you know, the way forwards to make sure that we can keep her here with us and that she's going to continue to doing the hard work that she's doing. This Film Office, you know, in itself is bringing millions of dollars to Orange County. It creates, you know, it creates a lot of jobs here in Orange County, and so when we think about our economy, when we think about our sustainable economy, it is going to be things like film and tourism that are going to boost our region and put us on the map. So, I'm fully in support of this, and I think it's an absolutely great idea, I'm glad that they tried to play around with money and were able to make the cuts where necessary. I think that speaks volumes for what they're trying to do, and, you know, I'm really excited that they did that because, you know, they put their money where their mouth is, you know, and, you know, pun intended, and so, you know, really excited about that. Thank you, and I hope that everyone will vote for this.
Okay, please, if you're not speaking, please mute your, mute yourselves. Legislator Anagastakis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be in support of this, the reasoning sounds to be solid, and Mr. Kulusek has done a great job with the numbers, but question for Antoinette Reed, our council, please. It's my understanding that the department could have done this on its own, within their own department, they can move a line, they can move around numbers within line items to accommodate whatever they need to do without our approval, but isn't it ultimately the county executive who either is going to hire a full-time person or is not going to hire a full-time person? Do I have this correct, Antoinette?
Well, part of what you said is correct. Department heads do have the ability, working with the Budget Department, to move monies from line item to line item, however, that is not the case for moving monies into personnel lines. The only one that can do that is the county executive. So, they're limited as far as staffing is concerned, ultimately, the county executive has the say as to how many positions and what positions are in each department. So, no, a department head could not move monies from consulting or from specialty payments into personnel lines.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, who's next? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Lee Benton.
We have Menuda and Stenganga.
Okay, okay, Lee, Menuda, and then Stenganga, let's go in that order.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I was gonna, I hope you can hear me because I'm in the middle of Delaware County, but I was going to just say exactly what Mr. Anagastakis just broke up, brought up about five minutes ago, that the county executive, this is completely unnecessary, it may sound good that we, ooh, we want to put in someone full-time, but it's completely unnecessary because it's the county executive's choice. We move money into any line to make someone full-time, and he can say, okay, that's nice, but I'm not going to do it. So, this is definitely just, you know, a nicety to do, but procedurally unnecessary. If the county executive wants to do it, he could move anything around, like Antoinette said, within a department himself without our approval. The only time he needs our approval is when he wants to take money from one department and let's say flip it over to DPW another department. So, again, it's nice to say we're doing this, but procedurally unnecessary, and if the county executive doesn't agree, it goes nowhere, it'll just sit there till next year. Thank you.
Okay, who was next? Joe?
We have Menuda, Menuda and Stenganga, and Benelli.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to this Film Office, it's been an amazing feat, especially within COVID, I fully support this, and my prior question has been answered by the discussion that's been had so far, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Kathy?
Thank you, Chairman. I also am fully in support of this, but now I do have a question, and today, if you can answer this, if we move this money into an actual line that's personnel and either you or Debbie, and does that now make it so that they can't use it for those other lines if the county exec does not agree to make this position full-time?
I'm going to defer to Debbie on this because I think, once you move it into personnel lines, department heads can't move it out to fund their budgets, other lines in their budgets, but they, but they can move monies outside of personnel. So, once you take this 44,770 and move it into personnel lines, it's no longer available to the, for the department head to use for anything else but for personnel.
Can I just clarify that?
Okay.
It's no longer available for that unless the county executive approves that type of a transfer.
Correct.
So, if county executive were to approve it, they could use it and put it back.
Okay, so Debbie, let me ask a question then, so if we approve this, which I'm fully in support of, because I think that this is a good thing, it will bring money back in, it'll help thrive with our economy and push for stuff, so if we approve this and we move it over to a personnel line to make that position full-time, if the county exec does not choose to make it a full-time position, he could then still allow that money to stay in the budget as it's projected right now, rather than just hold it off and have that department lose that money?
Yes, the county executive's office could approve a transfer back into a contractual line from personal services.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, O'Donnell here?
Yes, just there, O'Donnell.
Thank you. So, I'm going to support this, all right, but a few things, I talked at E and E about it, how the county exec was putting it on us to increase positions, right, he could have done this before it even got to us. You could also make the argument that the 44,000, if it's available for this, why was it in the budget when we have all this austerity going down? But like I said, Amanda made a very good argument for it, she's got the support, this is going to pass, whether the county exec fills it full-time, who knows? More important to me, though, is if we do pass this, which I think it will pass, we should attach a resolution to the Governor's Office about his talk about tax credits and getting rid of them in the Film Ministry for the state of New York as far as his austerity.
Getting rid of that, I couldn't hear you, Jim. Getting rid of the tax credits, you mean, for the film industry?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, more important to me, besides the position, is sending something up to Albany about them talking about getting rid of the tax credits for the film industry, because without those tax credits, that's how New York is getting all this money, especially Orange County, with the tax credits. Without the tax credits, the film industry is going to go away in New York. So, we can send a letter up to Albany saying, hey, this is what we're supporting, we increased the position to full-time just because it's important to our economy, we can't have Albany taking away those tax credits, so.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, it looks like Majority Leader Benelli.
Yes, okay, Majority Leader Benelli, go ahead.
Thank you very much. You know, I've listened to this discussion, we've had this discussion, we had the discussion at the Special Ways and Means Meeting, we didn't take any action on it, and now we're discussing it again, and quite frankly, I think it's an exercise in futility, for all of the reasons mentioned. I fully support, and I went to bat for the Film Office. I used to sit on the Arts Council, and that's when they started including the film industry and all of this, so they've made a remarkable, a remarkable dent in bringing things into Orange County, and we see the revenues and we see the profits from all of the other things that are coming in for our restaurants, our hotels, and everything else. But bottom line is, as the question started, we realized that the county executive is the one that's going to determine this, and he's going to make the final decision on as we move forward to this. So, we can move money around within this budget, but at the end of the day, he doesn't have to do this. So, I think that we should work cooperatively, see how the first quarter of 2021 starts to proceed, and then if we can make those adjustments, the money is there. So, I agree with a lot of the things that everybody has said, but I don't think now we should change the budget, I think if everything aligns in the first quarter of the year, we can make that adjustment then, because it isn't creating any more taxation. So, for that reason, I'm going to be a no.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment, I think the policy decision here is not moving money around from one line to another to personnel, I mean, yes, you are doing that, and that's the budgetary adjustment, but the other part of the budget is personnel lines and the number of positions that the county has as far as individuals who work for the county. So, the policy decision that you're making is whether you want to increase the positions in tourism from the six, and I'm not sure how many are part-time, but from, you know, making one part-time position into a full-time position, and that's the message, if you want to do that, that's the policy change in the, and the adjustment in the budget that you're making, and you're asking the county executive to accept. So, it's not necessarily about the money, it's really about, do you want to increase positions in that department and overall in the county, in county personnel? So, I just want to bring that to your attention, that's the policy.
That's the policy, I agree, but I think, you know, we put the money there, they know the intent, whether we create the full-time position after the fact is fine, but, you know, I think we know what everybody is saying here, council, but, you know, I think it's good, can you hear me? Seems like everybody's...
We're listening.
Yes, we can hear you.
I can hear you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because everybody's like a blur to me now. But anyway, were there any more discussion on this? Legislator Fagion?
One short comment, Mr. Chairman, Jim Kulusek?
Yeah.
I have one more comment? And waiting till the first quarter goes by, that's three months of site selection, people coming to town with people scrambling because we only have a half-time person to show them the places in Blooming Grove and Port Jervis and Crawford and Newburgh and wherever else that they're looking for. So, I think that one quarter of the year wasted with a half-time position is detrimental to the Film Office, so.
Okay. Legislator Fagion, do you have your hand up?
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman. I think it was Chair of the Boy a couple of years ago who once talked about the concept between the like-to-have and the have-to-have, and at this moment right now, where we have small businesses throughout the region who are closed and shuttered and people unemployed, it is careless for this legislative body to add more positions to our government, especially a full-time position. If this position was warranted, the county exec would have put it in the budget. We can discuss this till we are blue in the face, but at this moment, adding a full-time position which may or may not be filled is reckless by our government when we are facing deficits and who knows what, as this pandemic continues to batter our communities, our region, and the state. For that reason, Chairman, I ask that we just do not take an action on this and vote no. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman, Lee Benton?
I see party leader Aimo wants to speak as well.
Okay, go ahead, Lee first, then Michael.
Yeah, no, just a simple comment, I said, I was just going to say that we really don't know what the future is going to bring, and I'm more inclined to think right about now we're going to be scrambling under a lockdown because of the pandemic, not having too much work.
Okay, thank you. Legislator Aimo, party leader Aimo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It wouldn't go off, my finger wasn't working right. I've listened to it all, I think that, I think the fiscal question is one that we can address because that's really our role, and Antoinette raised the policy question, and coupled that with what Mr. Fagion said, I think, I think we are setting a precedent, not only in the public but within the other departments, that we were so hard at telling them they shouldn't, you know, have certain items, they should try to tighten their belt as much as they can, and at the 11th, at the last hour, we're saying, oh yeah, but here's one department we'd like to increase. It's not costing us any money more, any more money, and I think Mr. Kulusek made an excellent argument, but there is that perception that we're adding items, and it makes me a little concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a dilemma for me because I understand all the points, but I told Amanda probably three or four weeks ago that I would support it because it wasn't an increase to her budget, and, you know, we can sit there and say all we want, but we're talking about an $813 million budget, and we've all stuck with the county exec for, with everything, I mean, we're only talking about, you know, really not a change here in an $813 million budget. So, if this passes, I would expect that the county exec would make that position full-time, if we have to create it, so be it, but that is the intent of the legislature, if we pass it, if it fails, so be it, and we move on and it doesn't get created. But I do buy into the argument that we are going to, it is going to help the local economy in many respects, and I bought into that before, so. With that being said, I will ask for roll call, yes, is Antoinette correct?
I have my hand up.
Yes, yes, okay, go ahead, Minority Leader.
Yeah, I just, it's funny, I agree with you on everything that you just said, the fact that the county executive knows that the Film Office brings in millions of dollars, look, he had a hard job reducing everything in the budget himself. If he recognizes that the county legislature knows that the money's in their budget and can help bring in revenues to the county, I don't think he'll just ignore what we're offering here in that regard. Last minute, yeah, what the Majority Leader said is that this meeting is exactly for what we're talking about right now, it's our last shot, so in regards to not making any changes now, this is the chance that we have, we've given you the information that you need, we're just asking the county executive to reconsider his cut or whether he's going to fund it or not. He's going to know that the legislature is in support of it, he knows that it brings in millions of dollars of revenue, and if we're okay with it, I think he'd be okay with it too, so I just wanted to throw that in as well, and I agree.
Thank you. And if we pass it, I would certainly hope that he does, I mean, we cut $210,000 out of our budget because we had to tighten our belts, and, you know, we could have put that as a placeholder and kept it in the budget, but, you know, I think the message from the legislature is that we can't do that at this time. But in that, in the tourism budget, we're creating a half a position, let's call it, to help bring in revenue for the county, which is more, it's more than going to bring its share of revenue for the county for that extra 20,000 or whatever it is. Okay, roll call, yes?
Mr. Chairman, a vote yes is to make the adjustment to the tourism budget.
Right, that's what I thought, okay. Roll call.
Benelli? No. Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
No.
Anagastakis?
Yes.
Benton?
No.
Chini?
No.
Fagion?
No.
Einz?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Hi.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Wiskavage?
Yes.
Vasty?
No.
Sierra?
Hi.
Staganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
No.
Tautel? Tautel?
Is Lori disconnected or?
Lori, are you there?
I'm here. I couldn't get the music stopped. I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is it a I or?
Yes.
Nay.
I'm sorry?
Nay.
No? Okay. Tuwe?
Yes.
Say I or no, Lori?
A nay, no, no.
No, okay. Tuwe?
Yes.
Vero?
Yes.
Rasha?
Yes.
Thirteen eyes, eight noes.
Okay, that was a close vote. Okay, any other revisions to the budget? Motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, minority leader Paduk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you well know, uh, I think through every Ways and Means Committee meeting, I reacted on, in regards to, uh, the legislative grant program. Uh, we've talked about it many times. You all know, I sent you all an email. I was hoping for a response, uh, in regards to it. Uh, I did get a response from Mr. Chaney. Thank you for responding. Uh, the fact is, is that this money being reencumbered into the 2021 budget has no effect at all on, on, on the, uh, on taxation. And the fact is now that we all know that there's a change in the administration and that the federal funds may be coming back to Orange County and to municipalities to help support their budgets. By doing, by putting back the $210,000, uh, into our budget and reencumbering it with no taxation, we'll have an opportunity to support the program such as the Boys and Girls Club, Access Support for Living, the Police Community Council, the library programs, and the, I'm just talking about the town and walk yard. You know, there's a lot of opportunities here for us to help support our communities, knowing that there's no, no implication on the tax, tax rule. So I'm going to make the proposal to put $210,000, uh, reencumber $210,000 from last year's budget to this year's budget to fund the legislative grant program.
Second, Luhan.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, who's got their hand up? Kelly? I see Fagi's and Aimo's hands are still up. Was that from before?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Antoinette Reed. Uh, I do have a comment. Um, this really isn't an adjustment to the 2021 budget. Uh, it would be a modification to the budget after we adopt the budget. Uh, so the way you would do this is after we adopt the budget in, uh, I think we, Jean, just correct me if I'm wrong, we would do that on December 3rd?
Correct.
Okay, so after we do that, and it could be on the same agenda, just after we adopt the budget, then you would do a resolution. And so we, this really should go to, uh, like Ways and Means or, and Rules, uh, to encumber that money directing the, uh, you know, Director of, uh, Budget or I, I guess our department, uh, to encumber the funds to 210 in the 2020 budget so that it gets rolled over for this purpose in 2021. Uh, so that you're not raising monies, you would just be, it would just be a modification after we adopt the budget. Because right now, Carrie Ann, uh, you know, our office staff, who does the encumbering, there's nothing for them to encumber or any direction for them to encumber because we do not have a contract or even an RFP out to do this. So I think that if you, um, you know, do a resolution coming out of the committees, that would be the way that you would encumber, save the monies and roll it over to 2021.
Well, personally, I don't think it's going to pass anyway. So I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. We discussed it in committee and, and Mike brings up some good points, and I was for it in the past. But it's, in these tough times, I think most legislators aren't going to vote for it. So what would we do right now, just to call the question on this to see if there's support for it or not? Um, you know, and then we can do what you just, the mechanics of what you just said. So let's just, so we, we can just call the question as it's presented, right, to make a modification?
Sure, mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, so why, we need to have a lot of discussion on this? Because it's.
Mr. Chairman, it's O'Donnell.
Yes, Jim, go ahead.
All right, so I agree with counsel that, uh, if we do call this question now, uh, it's not the proper way to go about it. It should just go to Ways and Means to roll over the money from last year and see what happens there. But, you know, this vote doesn't mean anything. You could still end up on Ways and Means. It could be raised again.
Well, I don't think, if it doesn't pass today, Jim, I don't think, I don't think Lee's going to entertain it on his agenda. And he, and he probably shouldn't. If it's, if, if it doesn't, if we don't have support here to do it, then.
Right, but this isn't the proper way to do it, according to counsel.
No, I understand. I understand that. But let's, let's try to get a consensus with, even if it's an informal vote, however we want to do it. But let's, uh, we've discussed it quite a bit in committees, two committees, I believe.
We have some hands raised, Steve.
What's your pleasure? Okay. Go ahead. Who's next?
Uh, we have Luhan and Paduk.
Okay, Luhan, go ahead, then Paduk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I, I've, you know, I've voiced my, my support for this, uh, you know, several times over. And, um, you know, the, uh, Mr. Chairman, you, you, and I said this before as well, you had made a comment, I think, that was very on point, uh, previously, where you said, you know, at least if we had a bit of this money, um, that would be something that, that we could, you know, wouldn't be the full amount. I would also be amenable to, to what you even half of, of this, um, if that was something that, that legislators would be more, more comfortable with. I think that that would be a, a good compromise, um, considering the, the financial state of the county, but also something that we can all kind of, uh, we're meeting each other halfway. Um, so that's something that I, I think that would be beneficial. If we, instead of going the full amount, um, we go at the 105,000 instead. Um, that way, you know, those who are concerned about, about the budget and so on, um, and then, and then we can look at next year whether or not we want to either add to the 105 or if we want to keep it at 105. I think that that would be something that we would, could all be relatively amenable to. Um, that's just something that I would, I would recommend. Um, and I think that that's, that was kind of what you were speaking about the last time, that, and you seemed supportive of that. I don't know if that's changed, but, but, and I don't want to put words in your mouth either. But that seems like a really reasonable way for us to work together. We meet at halfway and then, you know, it meets both, both of our concerns.
Yeah, let me just clarify that that was, I would support that if I thought there were more than 11 votes or 11 votes to, to move ahead with that. So we can always ask that question, um, after, after the next speaker. Who was the, um, who was the next speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Minority leader Paduk, and then we have, uh, legislator Fagi.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike, and then Tom.
You're muted.
Yeah, Mike, you're muted.
You're muted, Mike. Unmute yourself, Mike.
Sorry. I've done that before. Now, I'm a little surprised that at the last Ways and Means or the prior couple Ways and Means Committee meeting, that that point wasn't brought out, that we had to have a resolution. Because if I had known that, to have a resolution passed at a committee to have it encumbered for next year, I would have surely, uh, looked at doing that earlier. However, today I thought it's the last chance that I would get. Um, so now we have to go back to Ways and Means to reencumber. Um, that's a little, I don't know, I'm a little set back.
Mike, that doesn't preclude you from doing it. That doesn't preclude you from doing it. But let's just, let's get the consensus of the legislature, whether we want to move ahead on this. I want to get.
Well, let me just make, the, the point, the point I was making is that.
On whether we want to, we'll start out with 105,000 because we don't, if we don't have a vote for 105,000, we're not going to get the vote for 210,000. So I don't want to have a, you know, it doesn't preclude you from doing what you want, the way Antoinette explained it. So let's get the feeling here today. Um, you said what you wanted about it and, and, uh, let Tom say what he wants to say about it, and then let's.
Well, let me just clarify.
Take an informal vote on 105,000, because we're going to be here for a half hour.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, Steve. I just want the attorney to clarify that whatever we vote today, we'd still, if we approved it, we'd still have to have, uh, a Ways and Means Committee meeting to reencumber it for next year's budget. Is that correct, Antoinette?
Uh, well, yes, yes, you'd have to do that because at this point in time, you have no monies to put in this budget. You know, you're, you can't, you can't roll it over yet. You have to wait until you adopt the budget and then you modify it by rolling over money from last year. So there's really no vote to have today.
Okay, so it would be in the December committee meeting that we do that.
No, well, you're going to bring it to committee in November, you know, in the next two weeks to get a vote on it, uh, to bring it to, to get it on the legislative session floor. And that's where you can debate how much money you want to encumber, if you want 105 or you want 210. But really, there's no vote to take today.
Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you. Legislator Fagi.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, this issue's been discussed, as you mentioned, uh, at length in the past. It's been through several, uh, discussion, uh, periods, also through commit, it's been discussed at committees. Uh, I have some grave concerns as chairman of the Rules Committee as to, uh, how this could even be possible. But what I'm more offended by and upset with is, uh, the notion that this quote has no effect on taxation or no implement, or no implication to the tax rules. This money, 210,000, 105,000, this is the taxpayers' money. It's not our money. It's not one legislator's money. It's not the legislative body's money. It's the taxpayers' money. And with the greatest of intentions and, and into giving to community groups and organizations, yeah, that, that's a great idea. This is the taxpayers' money, not ours to sprinkle through our communities to look like, you know, conquering heroes. It's the taxpayers' money first and foremost. They deserve to keep it more now than.
Let's hope you say that with every budgetary line. Let's say, let's hope you say that with every budgetary line.
Excuse me, I have the pleasure, I have the privilege of the floor right now. And that being said, that this is the taxpayers' money and it should belong to them. And to have this notion here today and going forward, I will always vote against this. This is, uh, exactly what makes levels of government so bad, whether at the state level or the federal level. I haven't supported this in the past. I will not support this today, and I definitely won't support this in the future. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Okay, let me, let me just ask for an informal vote on the hundred, starting out with the 105, because if we don't pass 105, yes. Can, can we just do that? Because we're going to debate this for a while and it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lee.
Right. All I was, all I was going to say was I think procedurally, Antoinette is 100% correct. So again, if you would like to take a consensus vote for today, I will make sure I get a copy of the roll call. And if it gets consensus, uh, positive from the members of the Ways and Means Committee, I will put it on my agenda. If it's negative, I will not put it on the agenda and entertain it.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
Point of information.
I would ask for, I would ask for a vote. Let me, let me, I'm going to ask for a vote, an informal vote of all the legislators, if they want to move ahead, let's just say, let's start with 105,000 to move this to the Ways and Means Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. I have one more comment too. And I'd like to go first. In regard to Mr. Fagi, why don't you say that about Black Lock Fish and Game Club that gets 30 grand of taxpayers' money? Or the, or the, or the libraries that are a taxing district that get taxpayers' money? I never hear you talk once about any of those issues that we give money to. So why is it this different? It's not, and you all know it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, leader, a party leader, Aimo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, 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 I agree with, with the council talking about what the appropriate role is, but I, it's your call. If you want to have a, a vote to see if confidence is going to go in the right direction.
Yeah, I just want an informal vote to see if, if it's, because Mike's not, I don't think Mike, and, and believe me, I was for, Mike knows that I, Mike Paduk knows that I was for this before, and it passed before, and it could pass again down in the future when we're back in better times. But right now, I just didn't see that it was necessary. So I'm going to call for a vote.
Well, wait, wait, Mike, I'm not, I'm not done.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
No, I just said, no, I, I, but in, in, in all sincerity, you know, I think Mr. Paduk has made a good point to me. And in the beginning, I supported this whole idea. In fact, I had a little difficulty when we pulled it out of the budget in the first, out of the, as I said, a budget in the first place and not left it as even a marker or a place marker. You know, we don't know what the future is going to bring, and there may be communities that need our help that would be, that they could do. So I'm not saying we're going to support it when it goes to the floor or if it goes to rules, but I think we should hear. So I'm going to be a yes on the question today.
Okay, okay.
Agnastakis question?
Yes, yes.
How about our hands up?
I can't see everybody's hands. I can.
Legislator Hines says his answer.
Okay. All right, legislator Hines, and then legislator.
Also, Agnastakis.
Agnastakis, excuse, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kevin, go first, and then Mike Agnastakis. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you. I was against this was, when it was created in the past. I'm against it today. It was pork then, it's pork now. If we, uh, don't encumber that money, guess what? It comes to the general fund and we can be used to pay whatever issues we're going to have shortfalls on. So it is real money and let's keep it, uh, let's let it go to the general fund. It's on straight money. This was our contribution to lower our, uh, our 15% of our budget. And let's keep, uh, our budget where, uh, 15% lower, just like all the other departments were asked to do. This is pork and keep it, try to spend this money. What, last time, when this was created, everybody had ideas where they're going to send the money to. Good luck making a promise to some organization because the check still has to be signed by finance and come through the county exec's office. So how could you promise the money to somebody and not know if they're ever going to get it? That's why I, I never even would have put in for it in the first place. Because how can you promise an organization the money and then it doesn't come out of the county exec's office? There's a lot of hurdles here. When you look at the rules of how to distribute this money, it wasn't an easy task. Antoinette can tell you all about it, because I know she was writing the rules. This was nothing easy. So just to say, everybody gets 10 grand to sprinkle around, it's not that easy. So I mean, let's kill this thing now, once and for all. Thank you.
Was a late, lengthy process. Okay, legislator Agnastakis, then the final, final, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Informal question, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a quick comment and then a question for our counsel, Antoinette Reed again. But, uh, listen, I understand everyone's concern that this is taxpayer money. Everything is taxpayer money. Um, you know, when a town accepts money from their senator, from Albany to fix a town road, that's exactly the same thing. They certainly take that money. It's taxpayer money. Um, it, if it goes for a good purpose, then, you know, it, it's, it's put to good use. My question for Antoinette Reed is, I'm a little confused because I certainly agree with everything you've said on the process of how this has, would have to be done to encumber it from one year to the next. I'm confused because I've never seen, I don't know the mechanism of what we're doing here. I've never seen a vote on a consensus during a legislative session. I, I don't understand that process. Can you explain this to me?
Well, let me just see if I understand your question. Is your question about, uh, the manner in which we encumber monies in that process? Or is your question about an informal vote?
About the informal vote that I'm, I'm calling for right now.
Right, right. The vote that's being called for now, I don't quite understand where this is necessary or what this is accomplishing. This is not, uh, a resolution that's on our agenda for a roll call vote. I've never seen in my, uh, 11 years on the legislature a vote for consensus.
Well, are you challenging the decision or the ruling of the, the chairman to have a, uh, a consensus vote on something?
No, no. If, if, if you're telling me he's allowed to do this and call for a vote on consensus, then, then he's, then I'm not going to challenge that. But what I'm saying is I agree with what you said of what the process needs to be to encumber the money from one budget year to the next budget year.
Well, I guess the question is how you interpret a consensus. There's no motion on the floor at this point. It's just the, the, uh, chairman. And I think the problem that we have at this point is that we're doing a teams meeting. It's remote. So it's very difficult to get a consensus of people. A lot of people don't have their cameras. Some people are on a telephone. So you don't understand, you, you, you don't have a sense of how people, uh, uh, feel about this, uh, situation. I think the chairman is trying to get a sense of whether or not there's a willingness to go forward either at 210 or 105, and it may be in the reverse order. Uh, but I think the technology is, is causing him, uh, and I'm not putting words in his mouth, to get a consensus vote. So this way, everyone can voice, uh, how they feel about this, uh, you know, the 210 or, uh, 105. So I, I, I don't fault the chairman for doing this, and, and I think the technology is driving it. We're not sitting around a table that everyone, you could see everyone yes-ing or nodding. So, uh, so I, I, I don't really have a problem with the consensus, uh, vote.
Thank you, Antoinette. And by the way, by the way, Antoinette, I didn't disagree with what you were saying at all. Let's call this vote. We, we, we just wasted about three or four minutes
Mr. Chairman, this is.
Going off on a tangent. Yeah, no, let, no, Kathy, let's call the vote on 105,000. I already know how the Republican, I already know how the Republican caucus feels about this. So it's, it's not going to pass anyway. I almost guarantee it. So let's get the vote on 105,000. So it's, it's not going to pass anyway. I'll almost guarantee it. So let's get the vote on 105,000.
Mr. Chairman.
Wasted, Steve? Come on.
Could I, could I please interject here?
Because we're going on, we're going to keep going on about this and it's not going to pass.
It's not going on. Steve, you got to let me speak. Okay? Our council just said there was not a motion. If I, if I'm correct, Michael made a motion and it was seconded by Lujan. So you need to make sure that there is not a motion on the floor before we vote so that we know exactly what we're voting on. Thank you.
Okay, he, you're, thank you. You're probably right. We've been spending so much time on this, I'm getting a little confused.
Well, I, I disagree. The money was with, adjust the budget. We're not doing that.
Okay, was there a motion for 210,000? Antoinette, was there a motion for 210,000?
There was, but that was an adjustment to encumber it into the budget. You can't, you can't encumber or modify a budget at this point in time until the budget has been adopted. So I'm going to ask Mr. Paduque then, uh, if you could withdraw your motion so that we can entertain this informal vote.
I'm not so sure that I'll, I'll get my motion heard at Ways and Means, so I'm not sure I'm going to take that, take it away.
Okay, then let's call the question on Mike, Mike Paduque's motion then.
Yes.
All in favor by yes, a no, no. Call the question, please. Call the question on his motion.
Kelly, roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, Jean, sorry.
Excuse me, excuse me, this, Benelli, could you please clarify what we're voting on for everybody's sake?
Yes, the vote is for, uh, to, uh, adjust the budget by, quote, encumbering, uh, 200, uh, encumbering the, uh, monies in the 2020 budget of 210,000 dollars and putting it into the 21 budget.
Point of information, did the attorney not say that this is not possible to be done?
This is how they want to do it. They want to take a vote, so I'm going to let it go forward. I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm only advising if, if, if my client doesn't want to do that, then we move forward.
It's an illegal vote.
Roll call, roll, no, roll call.
Benelli?
No.
Paduque?
Yes.
Ama?
Abstain.
An Agnastakis?
Abstain.
Benton?
No.
Chaney?
No.
Fagion?
No.
Heinz?
No.
Cool sec?
Yes.
Luhon?
Aye.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
I'm going to abstain because it's an illegal vote.
Ruskovich? Ruskovich?
Paul, you're muted.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, no. Sorry, I lost connection there for a minute.
That's okay. Sassy?
No.
Sierra?
Yes.
Seganga?
Abstain.
Sutherland?
No.
Tottel?
Abstain.
Tui?
No.
Vero?
No.
Resha?
No.
Okay, we have four ayes, 12 nos, and five abstentions.
Okay. Now, what's your pleasure on the 105,000? Do we want to have another illegal vote or hit a consensus informally like I wanted to do?
There's no motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I would be guaranteed that we could hear a 105,000 dollar presentation at the next meeting, I'd be, uh, happy to make that motion or not a motion and wait till then if I could be guaranteed to at least have a discussion in regards to a resolution for 105,000.
Mike, why don't we have the informal vote that I suggested, though it's not an official vote? And then that would give Chairman of Ways and Means an indication of how the legislature feels about this. Why don't we do that? Okay.
You're the chairman.
Can, can we get a roll call on 105,000? Yes vote would be in favor of moving it forward. The correct parliamentary way to the Ways and Means Committee. I'll entertain a motion. No, not a motion, I'll, I'll roll call. Excuse me, roll call.
Benelli? Here again, please clarify what we're voting on.
We're voting on to move the 105,000 for the member items for the Orange County Legislature to the Ways and Means Committee through the process. It's, it's an informal vote. It's just a, just an opinion.
To move it to Ways and Means.
Right. It's not an official vote. It's a consensus on this one.
Wait, wait a minute. If it's not an official vote, Katie just asked about moving it to Ways and Means. If that's what the vote is, it's an official vote to move it to committee.
Well, I'll tell you what, Mike, why don't you make it a motion to do that for the 105,000?
Okay, I'm making a mo- I'll make a motion to-
With somebody who's going to second that motion. Okay, roll call on the motion for 105,000. Same as the first motion, only 105 instead of 210. Excuse me for losing my cool, but I just want to get this moving along.
It's okay.
Okay, roll call, Jean, please.
Benelli?
No.
Paduque?
Yes.
Ama?
Yes.
An Agnastakis?
Yes.
Benton?
No.
Chaney?
No.
Fagion?
No.
Heinz?
No.
Cool sec?
Yes.
Luhon?
Aye.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
No.
Sassy?
No.
Sierra?
Aye.
Seganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
No.
Tottel?
Aye.
Tui?
Yes.
Vero?
No.
Resha?
No.
Have nine ayes, 11 nos, one abstention.
Okay. Are there any more motions on the budget? Any more changes to the budget? Okay, Luhon and then Seganga, go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as, as all of you know, uh, the Commissioner of Health, uh, mentioned, uh, a need for, uh, investigator for STDs. Um, during our, our committee meeting, she mentioned, um, she mentioned that the, the numbers going up in Orange County. Um, this is consistent with what's going on also across the country. Um, this is not the first time that she mentioned these, raised these, raised, uh, back in, back in February. Um, it, it was something that she, that she was, that kind of highlighted as something that we should be looking into, uh, for the future. Um, that department has been doing phenomenal job, you know, with everything that's going on with the pandemic. Um, you know, we, we have, I think that we would be remiss not to support that, that, that department, um, in, in, in all their needs. Uh, if this is something that the commissioner is saying she, she needs, um, I think we, we definitely have to support her, uh, and, and that department. And I, I just want to leave, you know, end with, with saying, you know, as legislators, we shouldn't be, um, you know, this concept of, well, you know, the county executive decides this and the county executive decides that. Ultimately, as legislators, we are the policy creators as well. Um, last year, you know, for better or worse, we, we voted on, uh, to, to put over a million dollars back into the budget despite the fact that the county executive had said that he did not want that, that money in there. And we made a policy decision to put that money back in. This year, we have similar situations, similar, uh, you know, challenges. Um, this one is, for me personally, is a no-brainer. You know, when we see that the young individuals are, are, are getting STDs here in Orange County, we can actually try to do something about it. It seems like a no-brainer to me. Um, I, I'm, I, I really hope that, that, uh, that other, my colleagues will support this. Um, I, I think that it's, it's definitely something that could go a long way to help our Orange County residents, particularly our youth, um, stay safe and, and healthy. And, um, and, and we, you know, with everything that's going on with the pandemic, we, we can't put a blind eye to things like STDs, especially when it's, it's, you know, gravely impacting people's lives. Um, I hope that there are someone that will second that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? Who has their hand up, Kelly? Two raised hands?
You have Chaney and Ama.
Chaney? Okay, Barry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess, what are we voting on? Um, there's no numbers. I, I don't know what the amounts are. I don't know where it's coming from. It's, conceptually, um, you know, I heard all the discussions that we had in, uh, in committee, um, but I'm not hearing any viable numbers here that, uh, would allow me to, to know what we're voting on.
Kevin Darian, do you have the numbers?
Uh, Debbie, are you able to, are you able to, to provide that for us?
Uh, I, I do. Um, a public health investigator would cost about 95,700 dollars. Um, in this instance, about 20,000 or 21,000 would be able to be funded by state funds. Um, the other would be an increase in their budget. Um, and I, I would have to ask you where you would be getting the money because at this moment in time, I don't think we can just raise the tax levy. We're quite close on the cap. And so you'd have to, if you're going to give them additional taxation, you'd have to tell me where you're going to cut somewhere else.
Well, last night I checked, the county executive has not cut his budget at all. So I mean, that would be a good starting point.
Do you have a specific line item?
I don't, uh, but, but again, I mean, I, I think ultimately just trying to be flexible. I think this isn't, you know, we, this is definitely something that should be a, a priority. Um, you know, this, our commissioner has done a phenomenal, phenomenal job. If this is something she's asking for and it hasn't been approved before, you know, this is definitely something, you know, it's come before us to make the decision about this policy decision. So I think that if, if this is what she's asking for, we need, we need to do what we can to, to, to abide by it. So I, I'm flexible, Debbie. If there, if you, if you feel that there's a place where that would be, uh, more amenable for the, in our county, uh, budget to, 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 uh, to address that. But I mean, hon- honestly, you know, I, I would have gone to tax, county taxation.
Debbie, do you have a, a line that-
Yeah, that, that really wouldn't be a decision I would be comfortable making.
Yeah, that, that, I, I, I would not, I, I don't think that's her responsibility to decide what to cut in the county executive's budget. Um, that is really a legislative prerogative. Um, and so you would have to come up with the numbers, not, not the director.
Mr. Chairman.
If you're talking about cutting some costs in the public health depart, you know, in, in public health, moving some monies around there, but then again, you'd want to check with the commissioner to see where she thinks she can cut monies to fund this position. 74,700 is a lot of money. Budgets are really tight, so.
Yes. Okay.
In regard to Mr. Luhon, he makes a good point in regard to that subject. We do have 90,000 dollars that we're returning from contingency budget to the general fund for next year. So there is money available, not in her department, but being returned from contingency. So there is an opportunity to actually address that, that purpose.
I don't think we've closed the books yet on 2020, so we don't know whether there's actually going to be a lot of money left.
Okay, there's the, that amount is there right now.
Okay. You want to make a motion to, to make an equal, let's try to, you want to make a motion to take that money out of contingency for an equal amount of what the position is? Because that's what you're going to need to do, correct, Debbie?
Yes, so you, we would reduce the amount in contingency and we could fund, um, we would put it into the health department, but we would have less money in contingency then. See you then.
Let's move it along. Okay, let, uh, let's do it. Is that okay with you, Kevin Darian, to do it that way? So we can move this vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Can we call the question soon? Okay, legislator Agnastakis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess, I guess my question was, was answered with this, with that last move. I was just going to say, i- i- you know, the concept of what the legislator wants to do is, uh, is, is positive, but when you, when you're at this point, you have to come in and specify line items where you're moving money from to accomplish the task that you want to. So as Mr. Chaney said, without that information, you can't move on anything. So I was hesitant to vote without that. But since you're going to make the move that, uh, was just stated out of contingency, I guess we can move forward and take a vote on it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd rather call the question because it's, it's probably not going to pass anyway. So if it helps move it along by taking it out of somewhere, let's do it. Can we call the question or do we have any more?
We had a few more hands raised. We had, uh, legislator, a party leader, Ama, and legislator Ruskovich.
Okay. Party leader, Ama, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I certainly was there in the committee meeting and I, I heard the, the argument made by the Commissioner of Health. But it was that, it was not really in context of her whole budget. Really, the question is, as we look at the COVID experience, would she prefer now to have put more money into COVID than into the STD area? We need to, I think we need to look at it in committee in totality. Because to just throw money into it for that, when she'd prefer money somewhere else, I, I'm a little confused on it. I think we should, I'm going to vote no on it and, and maybe it'll come up at the next committee meeting, at the committee meeting, and we can talk about it.
Thank you. Legislator Ruskovich?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I have to agree with, uh, legislator Ama there. Um, you know, I, I think the intent of this is good. I think it's, uh, you know, something we're going to have to deal with in the future. But right now, uh, our biggest public health threat right now is the pandemic. And, uh, you know, I don't feel comfortable taking money out of contingency because we don't know yet what the final cost of this, uh, COVID pandemic is going to be. You know, if there's going to be a second wave, um, you know, we may need that money for more pressing issues. So, um, I'm a no vote on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we call the question yet? Let's call the question. A no vote is to not do it and a yes vote is to, to create the position, allocate the money as, as set forth. Okay, roll call, Jean.
Benelli?
No.
Paduque?
Yes.
Ama?
No.
An Agnastakis?
No.
Benton?
No.
Chaney?
No.
Fagion?
No.
Heinz?
No.
Cool sec?
Yes.
Luhon?
Aye.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
No.
Sassy?
No.
Sierra?
Aye.
Seganga?
No.
Sutherland?
No.
Tottel?
Yes.
Tui?
Not at this time, no.
Vero?
No.
Resha?
No.
Six ayes, 15 nos.
Okay, are we prepared to vote on number one? If there are no objections, I will, uh, entertain them while we are getting, I'll entertain roll call, Jean, on number one.
Okay, okay. Just for clarification, just for clarification. Uh, the only, uh, adjustment to the budget is the, uh, uh, forming or creation of the full-time position for the, uh, film office specialist. That's the only adjustment.
Point of information, we're, we're not voting on the final budget up or down now. We're just voting on the adjustments, correct?
That's correct. That's the purpose of this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, Jean.
Benelli?
No.
Paduque?
Yes.
Ama? Ama?
You're muted, Mike. That's a yes. That's a silence.
An Agnastakis?
Yes.
Benton?
No.
Chaney?
No.
Fagion?
No.
Heinz?
Yes.
Cool sec?
Yes.
Luhon? Luhon?
No.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell? O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
No.
Seganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
No.
Tottel? Tottel? Tottel?
Looks like she dropped off, Jean.
Tui?
Yes.
Yes.
Vero?
Yes.
Resha?
Yes.
Okay, 13 ayes. Excuse me, Jean, before you call the final roll call, Mr. Luhan, I'm just making sure you wanted to vote a no on this to make the position.
The only change we made, Kevin Darian, was what you wanted, so I would think you'd want to vote for this budget.
This was the film office specialist, so I just want to make sure that you understand that you voted no for that position.
That's fine. I misunderstood. Thank you, yes.
Okay, you're an aye.
Okay. Thank you.
14 ayes.
Hold on, hold on. I'm confused here, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
The only change we made was for the tourism position in the presented budget.
Okay.
Is this the amendment we're voting on?
What's that?
Is this the amendment?
The changes. Yeah, the changes to the budget.
This is not your final vote on the budget. This is the vote to amend the budget with our adjustment, the legislature's adjustment to create the full-time position and fund it for the film office specialist. That's our only adjustment, revising the budget.
Okay.
Okay, so is that 15, that's 15 ayes now?
Yes, yes. Lori. Lori.
Point of, Mr. Chairman, point of information. Point of information, Mr. Chairman. Council, I'll read, could you? It seems to me, as I'm hearing, there's a lot of confusion on this. Is there an opportunity to recall this vote?
I think we're just clarifying, there were only two people that misunderstood, so I don't think we have to do a revote on this, Mr. Amo. I know you like doing that, but I don't think we need to do that. You know, I think we're just, you know, clarifying. You know.
Michael, on the way out the door, she's giving you that part. We clarified two votes. So is everybody, is everybody good?
And Lori had a problem, Ms. Tautel had a problem with her connection, and so she's back again, and we haven't finished the vote yet in the tally, so.
Okay, could you tell me where we're at, because it was phasing out, and I couldn't hear anything, and then I totally lost connection, had to re-log everything in.
Okay, Lori, can you hear me, Antoinette?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so what we're doing is now we're voting on agenda item number one, revising the proposed 2021 executive budget, and the revision is the adjustment to the tourism budget to fund a full-time film office specialist.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are you a yes or a no, Lori? Because you're the only one left to vote.
Oh, I apologize. Like I said, I was connected. I am a yes.
Thank you.
So that's, is that 16 yeses?
The vote.
We're completed, we just.
She just needs to say what the vote is.
Yeah, I think it's 16 ayes, right, Jean?
Yes, it is, 16 ayes. Let the clerk do her job. 16 ayes, five nos. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to number two. Jean, you want to read that?
Legislator Benton, resolution revised in the proposed 2021 capital plan for Orange County pursuant to section 373 of county law and section 4.07B of the Orange County Charter.
Zero second.
Okay, discussion? There is one amendment, correct?
Correct. That is to the capital plan.
Do we need a motion on that amendment?
The motion is to vote, to, the motion is on the, on the resolution.
Okay.
So do we have a motion in a second, right? Yes.
Okay, so discussion on that? No discussion, Paul, you have your hand up, or is that from before?
No, that was from before, sorry about that. Yeah, that was from before.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mike.
All right, just a question. In this capital plan, that $133,000 says it's for an X-ray machine to be purchased in 2021. Is there an existing X-ray machine that they're using now, and is this replacing it, or is they adding to it? Does anybody know that, Chairman of that committee?
Um, so Barry?
It would be Mr. O'Donnell. I think the discussion went that the machine is antiquated, and they need, they need to update it and get a new one ASAP.
Come on. The one that's there now is useless, so they need a new X-ray machine for the autopsies.
Let's go. Thank you.